Let's go ahead and take roll call.
Mr. Hillsinger?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
And Bill?
Uh, Mr. Sneed, you're on mute. I'll come back to Mr. Sneed. Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Ms. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott? Mr. Sneed, I see you are here. I've put a request for you to unmute. I see you speaking too.
He's muted.
Yeah, it's still showing you as muted. I don't know if you'll need to leave and rejoin.
I'm mute. Okay.
Oh, now you're unmuted. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have eight?
Yes.
Uh, we need a motion to accept the meeting summaries from the executive meeting of October 2nd and public hearing October 9th.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Status sheet? For July 27th to November 6th, need a motion to accept? Motion?
Do we have a motion?
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We have no committed reports. So we'll go to the one, uh, new business item, which is, uh, PC 28 dash 23, Chris and Angela, Courtrite.
Good evening, PC 28 dash 23, Chris and Angela Courtrite, was a request for an amended development in the C8 Plan Commercial District for a tract size of 0.53 acres located in the southwest quadrant of Gravoy Road and Council Avenue. As the commission may recall, the site is located in the South County and to the right of the screen is the site, look it outlined in red. And here is a wider area photograph of the subject site. At the public hearing, the preliminary site development plan showed the reuse of the existing building and asphalt pavement on the site. Relocate access to one cop court central, one cop central court on Gravoy Road, remove the existing chain link fence, abut in residential development. Um, the installation of this, of a six foot tall decorative wide bridle fence. Um, it also shows the provision of nine parking spots, including one ADA accessible space. And then the purpose use of the site is the sale, repair, and warehousing of appliance. The site development plan also shows a 15 foot landscape buffer along Gravoy Road and Council Avenue per zoning ordinance requirement. And also plans for new lighting, including wall mounted LED lights on the building for parking lot illumination and the relocation of the single existing lighting standard. And also shows the position of signage on the mansard portion of the existing building facing Gravoy Road. The side development plan also shows a 10 foot by 40 foot loading zone located at the southern portion of the structure and show circulation movements for a truck to use the loading space. The preliminary architectural elevation shows a building, shows that the building is clad in masonry facade until the mansard roof portion, which is ton metal, along Gravoy Road frontage. And then the rest of the building is clad in a mental facet. The image by, by the rights, by my right side shows the picture of the former facet of the building before improvement. Some of the revisions that we like to see on the site development plan is a 10 foot landscape buffer with one canopy tree and four shrubs or one evergreen tree and four shrubs by 20 linear feet rounding upwards along the property line, abut in the multiple family residence. And also the configuration of the parking through along the building or to the northeastern portion of the tract, talking about this required setback, which is shown in this diagram by my left. Staff recommend approval because the commercial development along Gravoy Road, a major commercial exterior corridor is already established at the site and remains appropriate. The development conditions inherent to the C8 Plan Commercial District will ensure the proposed development is compactable with surrounding uses and ensure reasonable improvement to the site. The proposed use of the traps for the sale, repair, and warehousing of equipment and appliances is appropriate at the site and with surrounding permitted developments. A 15 foot landscape buffer would be required along Gravoy and Gravoy Road and Council Avenue, which will increase the aesthetic quality along the Gravoy Road corridor. And at this time, I ask for recommendation of approval.
Okay, we need a motion? Anyone?
So moved.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Questions?
I just have one question. The signage they say is pending. Uh, I seen the, the existing building does have that mansard roof. But the, the signing, the signage is to be on the mansard roof? Or the new design looks like they've done away with the mansard roof? Uh, are we gonna have some sort of final, uh, uh, plan for this?
We have put in, uh, the architectural review requirement into, into the recommended conditions of development for this petition. Um, Gretchen, if you could go back to the, one of the slides that has the, yeah, that, that'd be fine. The, the mansard element isn't very dramatic and it does sort of blend in a bit, but that is where they've shown, um, the signage. It's a lot bigger, sort of, um, placeholder they have is a lot bigger than what the zoning ordinance would permit. Um, but that is what they've indicated is that the wall signage would be on that sort of, um, formally shingled portion of the, of the facade.
So it's still gonna be shangled?
It's a, um, it's sort of a, uh,
It's flat. It's, it's, it looks like a standing seam.
It's like a different sort of metal now. It still has this sort of relief, but it's a different material than the, the shingles.
Okay. Well, yeah, if we get architectural review, that's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Uh, we have no old business. We have one letter for approval. PC 26 dash 23, how was Shaker?
So this letter of recommendation is consistent with the planning commission's, um, recommendation of approval from the October 2nd executive meeting. Um, I would remind the commission that this was a request for a C8 Plan Commercial District to permit auto repair, auto repair and automobile sales. The information report that was presented, recommended approval of a C8 that would permit automobile repair, but would not permit automobile sales. Um, so we haven't brought this back to you, uh, in October because we were working with Mr. Shaker to make sure he understood the options before him. Um, and we have been in communication with him and have brought this letter to you tonight to forward to the council.
Okay, uh, with that, we need a, a motion?
Yes, so moved.
We have a second?
I got a motion.
Discussion?
The only, the only discussion I have is I, uh, what is the letter changing from what we approved?
The let, the recommendation in the, in the letter of recommendation is, is identical right now to what was in the information report.
That's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
So, so my question was, at the hearing, we had discussed that by going, by him going through with this, it's kind of more restrictions on him than what he currently had, if I remember that correctly. And about him maybe pulling this back, ha- has that been communicated to him? And he was still fine with moving forward?
Right. We let him know that his options basically were to withdraw the petition, which would leave it as a, a site in the C2 with a CUP for a service station. Um, his other option was to submit some additional information to the planning commission, which he elected not to do. Um, and the other option is to, is to let the process move forward and let the recommendation go to the council, which he, um, indicated he was fine with.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the letter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. Next item, we got correspondence. PC 23 dash 23, All Rig USA.
Good evening. This is PC 23 dash 23, All Rig USA. As the commission may recall, this site is currently zoned C8 Plan Commercial District as it was approved by the planning commission and county council. It is a requi, it's coming back before the planning commission tonight as an amendment to ordinance 28,879 for the 2.59 acres located on the southeast quadrant of Tesson Ferry Road at Town South Road and northwest of Old Tesson Road. As the commission may recall, this is the Chipotle and Chick-fil-A site along Tesson Ferry in South County. Uh, there was an unintentional error in the original ordinance, um, for the gross square footage. In the original ordinance, it was for 7,000 square feet. And based on the square footage of both buildings on the preliminary site development plan that was presented to the planning commission, it totals 7,563 square feet. So we are bringing this back before you tonight, um, recommending approval uh, to change the gross square footage, um, to, for the two buildings not to exceed 7,600 square feet as to just correct that unintentional error.
Okay, um, we need a motion?
Make a motion for approval, recommendation.
We have a second?
We have a motion?
We have a first and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it eight zero. We've got, uh, one site plan. PC 6404, Sam's Club.
Good evening. PC 6404 Sam's Club is a C8 Plan Commercial District. It's a 26.24 acre tract on the southwest corner of Lehman Ferry Road at Mel Avenue. This site is in South County and there it is outlined in red. Um, this is a, a portion of the Sam's Club, uh, overall development. What we have tonight are architectural elevations before you um, as part of a redevelopment of the former movie theater on the site. Um, the elevations show the building clad in a mix of materials and earth toned colors um, with new fenestration and a new parapet on the front facade, um, as well as some, uh, new materials on that front facade. And so we're recommending approval.
We have a motion?
Is it still gonna, oh?
First standing.
Second. Second.
What are they gonna be doing with this?
Uh, the proposed tenant is a church, Grace Life Chapel.
Okay.
So this is,
They've been working on this forever.
Yes, I believe they've owned the building for a while. Um, so this is kind of part one. They need approved architectural elevations to get the building permits for that new, um, the new parapet on the front facade. Um, and also they're showing, and I forgot to mention this before, I apologize, a new exit, uh, second story exit on the west elevation and a staircase. So this is kind of the first phase. Um, they'll be working on interior renovations and then they'll be coming back before you with an amended site development plan for some exterior, um, renovations to the, to the site that would change parking and stuff.
Okay.
This is only a portion of that building though, correct? It doesn't include the part that used to be or was, maybe still is county office?
Correct.
On the east end. This is just the old movie theater?
That is correct.
Okay. The rest of it's gonna remain the way it is right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, uh, did, it being a church, it, it, does it still meet the parking requirements?
That is something that we will dig into a little bit closer when they actually submit a revised site development plan. Um, but there is,
Can we do that before we approve them going forward with this? Because I think everybody realizes that the parking that Sam's takes up is, uh, there, there's not much left for, uh, a congregation to, to use it for church. And Sam's is busy on Sunday as it is on Saturday or Thursday. Uh, shouldn't we see what that parking requirement is and if they can, uh, comply with that?
So is it, when Abby mentioned, they are coming with some changes to the site development plan in terms of circulation as well. But as the parking lot sits right now, it is parked for the Sam's use and is parked for when this was a movie theater. And what I would note that is that when it was developed, the petition is from 2004. So being developed between 2004 and 2015, when our parking requirements also came down, I would suspect the site is overparked. Um, but we will dig into that when the site plan is, is revised as well. But the Department of Transportation and Public Works is already reviewing a reoccupancy permit and they do part, they do some of that parking analysis as part of the occupancy review as well.
Okay, anyone else?
Well, I'm sorry, was, um, Commissioner Sneed's concerned that there was too much parking or not enough? Not enough, okay.
The danger if we put a hold on this until the parking issue is resolved?
It's not really directly tied to the review of these architectural elevations.
As a legal matter, the only question in front of the commission right now is whether these architectural elevations are, are, um, something that, that you find acceptable. And under the current language of the ordinance, Mel, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the only requirement is simply that architectural elevations be submitted.
There are no specifics.
The question before the commission tonight is, are these architectural elevations acceptable?
Then they have to come back.
Thank you, Jacob.
Approval, correct?
I apologize, Mr. Elliott. I couldn't, I, we couldn't hear you very well.
They still have to come back and get final approval.
Yes, so subsequently, when they do need a site development plan as a, as a document, because they are submitting changes to the site, it would come back to the commission at that point again.
So we're just doing this piecemeal until the finished product, right?
In this case, that is correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
And that was needed for them to get a permit, right? This, this approval to continue on with the process. Does that, I understand the question?
Sort of the interior, uh, permits and this is sort of the key to unlock the, their ability to work on those permits.
Correct. And, and if it just simp, and if it was not clear is that occupancy would not be granted to this site through the occupancy permit process if it was found they did not comply with the, with the parking requirements. So that is built into this entire process in front of you is that the occupancy permit process will, is, is the process by which that is where that is caught.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
I'm, I,
opposed?
I sustain.
Let the record show seven zero one. And we'll go to the last item for the good of the order.
Good evening. So for your monthly education, the department decided to go over architectural review, which you have seen quite a bit of tonight. Um, so starting off, what is architectural review and why do we have it? Um, architectural review is a process that examines and ensures that new construction, um, or renovations are of high quality and conform with adopted regulations. It also ensures that the design is cohesive with the general style and design of surrounding structures as well as the visual impact the building will have on the community. So how does the planning commission and architectural review intertwine? Um, currently, the zoning ordinance for St. Louis County does not have a specific section dedicated to architectural review. So therefore, the planning commission acts as the architectural review board for St. Louis County, um, in certain instances. Um, so the planning commission can require architectural review to ensure that a project fits its context and is not a detriment to the surrounding area. Um, and some zoning districts in which the planning commission can require architectural review and then become the review board for these architectural reviews is in the C8 Plan Commercial District, the M3 Planned Industrial District, the MXD Mixed Use Development District, and the CUP Conditional Use Permit. So as you have seen in the past and kind of into tonight, um, during the public hearing, the petitioner will provide preliminary architectural elevations to the planning commission. This allows you as the commission to provide feedback, um, to these elevations such as requiring high quality materials, light sconces, and building colors. Um, then with the planning department drafts conditions for architectural review based on the preliminary elevations. Once the site development plan, um, has gone through the review with the department, staff will de, will determine, um, when the elevations meet the standards and requirements set by the planning commission. And then we bring, the department will bring the architectural, architectural elevations back to the planning commission for approval like you saw tonight. So what is the intent of architectural elevations? The intent is to provide a sense of, as to how a development will look in the planned environment by indicating key features of the development. Architectural elevations indicate the following, um, building colors, materials to be used, and lighting. Um, typically, we see in our, as you may have seen in previous examples, um, we typically ask for high quality materials in a lot of our architectural elevations here in the county. High quality materials, um, mean durable and authentic materials, which contain thoughtful detailing. Um, some examples of high quality materials include masonry or brick, stone veneer, um, exterior tiles. Typically, anything that is low quality or lacking durability would be con, uh, considered not high quality materials. Another item, um, that is typically intertwined with architectural elevations is fenestration. Fenestration is the openings in a building's facade, um, by definition. In design, fenestration is focused on a building's aesthetics and how doors, windows, and skylights affect a building's practicality. Um, so there are three main components usually with fenestration. Those are doors, windows, and skylights. But because doors and windows are the most visible, um, from the street, they have the greatest impact on a building's exterior appearance. So why do we focus on fenestration? Um, fenestration, especially window fenestration, can have an impact on the overall design of a building. Uh, the size, shape, and placement of windows and doors greatly affects the appearance of a building's facade. Fenestration can have an impact on a building's perceived symmetry, um, the building's perceived height, and how cohesive a building's interior and exterior feel upon entering. We also, um, from time to time, will ask for additional embellishments. Embellishments can be used to add visual interest and to break up the, um, mentality of a facade. Embellishments can be requested by the planning commission, um, which can include items such as light sconces, awnings, and decorative copings, which you can see examples here below. And if you guys have any questions about architectural review, we'd be happy to help.
Can we make one note? The, uh, planning commission in the past is, is asked to always have architectural review. Now where we have to ask on every petition, but it's an automatic.
Mm-hmm. Yes. So we, it basically is built into every set of development conditions we draft. And, and one thing I would note is what we've experienced tonight, um, is I think you can see the change in the way we write them. We used to write, you know, submit architectural elevations to the planning commission. It was sort of just open ended and now we try to be a lot more either responsive to what is shown on those preliminary elevations. Um, that way we can be a lot more prescriptive in the conditions themselves to really get what, what, um, to make sure we're getting what we were shown at public hearing and to make sure that what we bring to the commission is, um, you know, attractive and, and fits in.
Okay, anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Uh, one, I really appreciate these education sessions. These are fantastic. Uh, and, and the, the question is, I went through my packet when I, you know, uh, joined the commission a while back. I don't remember these being in there. Maybe that was me, but can these be shared? And I would love to kind of put these together each month to, to a book. I think it really helps me knowing what we are here to do and what we should be looking out for.
Sure, like the slides themselves?
Yes, yes. I think they're fantastic, yeah.
Sometimes we're tweaking them like the day of, but we can certainly share them with you after the fact. Uh, I, we could certainly do that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And we can go back and get the, the others as well.
Good idea. Anyone else?
Yep. I, I second what Commissioner Fagan said about how, how welcome, how welcoming these educational sessions are for us. Um, my question is, do you guys have some type of internal checklist that you use where fenestration, embellishment, et cetera, is like something that you look at? As, as, as Mel mis, mentioned that this is kind of all intertwined in the process. And if there is some, some type of checklist, I would like to see it. Um, if that's something that you can share, um, like a blank form or something. Uh, thank you.
Oh, understood, Commissioner Bedell. The answer to that, uh, really is that right now, the way that counties ordinances are written is that we only do architectural review in response to planned districts. So the, so development that's permitted by right in the, what we call the straight districts, like the C1, the C2, the C3, have no architectural review requirements. So it's through these planned districts that we're able to, um, require the property to go through this process. And because right now, the county does not have a, an ordinance which sort of universally captures architectural review for all development, it is, it is really responsive each time that we get a petition in. It really is responsive to, um, to what we're seeing, which is both, that's a double edged sword because it gives this commission the ability to be really contextually sensitive to, um, what it's seeing and making its recommendations to be, um, in alignment with, um, i- i- being proportional to the request. The other, but the other sort of side to that is that every discretionary ask that we make of a developer increases the time and cost of development. So we, it's a real balance, um, for us as a, as a government um, and as a recommending body, um, when we look at that. But right now, it is, But right now, it is, um, it is sort of, um, a, a case-by-case basis that we, that we do so. Now, over time, we've, we have created some, um, templates that we use for all of them. So, you know, we, we expect all architectural elevations to show generally the same things. We want all facades of the site to be sort of treated equally. We want to see every side of a building. Um, but then from there, we're able to be, um, y- you know, to, to sort of make determinations based on the, on the nature of the exact request. Is that, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Ja, uh, Jacob, uh, following up on that, uh, is, is Saint Louis, uh, consistent or similar to other planning, uh, uh, departments in, let's say, some of the incorporated areas here in Saint Louis County?
I, I appreciate that question. Uh, it really runs the gamut because you see some, there are some jurisdictions that are very, very prescriptive about every single development that occurs within their territorial limits. Um, you particularly see that in a lot of our central corridor sort of communities like the Ladues, the Town and Countries. Um, and those communities have exercised a significant, um, significant authority over architectural review in their, within their territorial limits. And then there are some that are closer to us, which are, um, they give, they give property owners pretty wide latitude to design their buildings however they want when they're permitted by right, but they can capture them in this, um, in these sort of discretionary processes like the, the planned districts. So I think we sit somewhere in the middle, um, in terms of, uh, uh, of what we do. I think that we really benefit from being a, a department that has signi, uh, you know, a, a fair number of planners on staff and therefore we can review these and make recommendations. There are some departments that have only one person on staff and so it can be a lot harder for them to, um, to facilitate those requests. So I, I think we're kind of in the middle. Um, there's always opportunities to improve it both from the side of creating a process that is clearer, more direct for the property owners so that they can make their determinations really early on in the process, which can be so critical, um, when they're trying to make economic decisions about how and where to develop. Um, and also from, from the other side of the balance, which is us wanting to create an environment that's aesthetically pleasing for our residents, um, and that creates enduring, enduring communities. So, um, so the long answer to that is I think we're kind of in the middle, um, of, of what other places do, which puts us, I think, in the mainstream.
Right, anyone else?
Yeah, just Jacob, one, one last question is with the comprehensive plan coming that's going to be, you know, built, created, will any of that, what we just discussed, be within that comprehensive plan?
Yes, I would-
Will anything change?
What I would say is nothing will change from, the comprehensive plan in and of itself will not change this process. But this process will be discussed as part of a comprehensive plan because what the, to do something, to change how architectural review is done at Saint Louis County, let's go into a theoretical world where the county wanted to establish a, an architectural review board and sort of capture, um, more development in the architectural process. Um, that would require, uh, significant changes to the zoning ordinance. So, and, and, and what this, what this commission, um, is charged with doing from a, from a really high scale, um, is to set the table through a comprehensive plan, that's the foundation for planning and zone, well, it's the foundation for zoning in a jur, jurisdiction. So a big question before this commission, probably a few years down the line, will be, we've got a comprehensive plan that's recommending these things, do we want to change our zoning ordinance? But that's a couple of years down the line before we can really bite that, before we can really start biting that apple.
Got you, thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, seeing none, uh, Jacob, anything else?
Yeah, well, that actually, that question then leads us into, I just wanted to give, uh, the commission a little bit of an update on the comprehensive plan. So, uh, as you all know, we have, it is under contract. So we are now, um, actively working with our, with our team, uh, AECOM. We are having, um, every other week coordination meetings with them and having multiple meetings every week, uh, here in the department coordinating, um, staff behind the scenes. So currently, the team is working on the detailed engagement plan. And that is going to be a document that is going to explain all the ways that the team is going to go out and engage the community as one of the first really big steps of going through this comprehensive planning process. And what I would expect at this point is it will be sometime in early January when that, we, we will have that ready for a complete presentation to the planning commission to, uh, explain the detailed engagement plan, um, and go over the entirety of it. Um, at that point in early January is when the team will also be here in person in Saint Louis. They will present it, um, to you all, um, and, and be prepared to answer questions about, about the engagement process. Um, so we're really, uh, we're, I mean, we're, we're sort of rocking and rolling every day, uh, on this, on this now. Um, and so one thing that, um, I would, uh, put forward to the commission is now that we're in November, um, always the first meeting in January, uh, um, Mr. Hilsinger is, is getting ready and sort of setting the table for the commission for the new year. So it, it's time to start thinking about maybe a nominating committee and also time to think about, um, what kinds of, if there's anyone, any individuals from this commission, um, that would like to do a, a comprehensive plan committee or, um, think about how we want to make sure that the commission is fully apprised and is fully invested in this process as much as any of you want to be. Um, so we just want to set the table, uh, for you all to start thinking about, um, how to do so. And I'm happy to have some conversations about how we can formalize those, um, in the next, you know, couple of months, um, as we get started. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions about where we are.
I nominate Bill Sneed to be on that committee.
Well, first you need a nominating committee.
I still nominate-
But I will leave that Mr. Hilsinger is, deals with this on a, he's dealt with this for years. Um, I just wanted to, um, get it on, the, sort of get it on the, in the coming up because it's, um, end of the year always comes fast. And then also that I think the last thing is, don't forget the Christmas party, December first at my home. Um, and I look forward to having all of you at my home, as many of you as can attend. Um, we've also invited Mr. Lawler and Mr., um, Mr. Ballard has been invited as well. Um, and we, I'm really looking forward to it.
Yeah, we had a good time last year. I liked the way you brought up old, uh, directors.
I'm hopeful that Glenn will be there, I know Gail will be there. Um, so I, I'd say we'll have, I, I'm hopeful Justin will be there. So I think we'll have a, I think we'll have a good, we'll have a, I think we'll have another fun festive evening.
I caught you on TV last week.
Oh, that's a, that's another thing is tomorrow is the, uh, tomorrow's election day. Um, of note for us in the department is we are paying attention to the Manchester annexation, uh, which is, which is going up for a vote tomorrow. Um, so that would be a fairly large portion of unincorporated Saint Louis County between, um, Manchester and, and, um, DePere and Town and Country, um, is up for, is up for annexation. So we'll be watching that very closely tomorrow.
You did a good job.
I appreciate it. Um, they, there's also, I don't know how, I, I haven't seen the story yet, but there's an, I was interviewed this evening as well. So there'll be another news story tonight, I think it's on-
Heels of the white?
Last time.
Any feels?
They are not predicting very high turnout.
Yes, I saw, I apologize, Mr. Hilsinger, I, I, I got cut off there. Um, yeah, I mean, we're just expecting it to be a relatively low turnout election. Um, you know, I feel that the Saint Louis County has been, uh, very clear and direct with residents, really explaining the value of our services, um, making sure that they had all the information they needed. So, uh, we are, we are very interested to see how they, how they end up, uh, how they end up determining their futures, so.
And can you quickly, and can you quickly describe or explain the consequences one way or another of that election?
Yeah, absolutely. So the question in front of the voters, it's, it's essentially two, two elections in one. It is, the city of Manchester has to vote to pass the annexation as well as the, about the sixty-five-hundred residents that reside in the proposed annexation area. Both sides of the election have to pass it, um, fifty plus one, it's a simple majority. So, um, the city of Manchester, just to give you Cliff's Notes of their argument, their argument is that, um, they are a smaller government, more responsive, and that they will provide better services to, to the residents of the area. The county's assertion is that we are, based on our economies of scale and our size, we can provide services at lower cost with higher specialization than typically a municipal, municipality can provide. And that's simply just based on the economy of our size, of how many employees we have and the amounts of services that we provide. And because of that, our contracts are typically cheaper, so we can provide the services at lower cost per unit of service provision than, than a municipality can. In this specific instance, the city of Manchester does have a property tax, which would mean that a home that's valued at with a, a market rate, market value of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is pretty common in that, in that area, in fact, a lot of it's actually quite a bit more expensive than that, uh, means that those residents are going to be paying, uh, around three-hundred dollars more a year in property taxes just on their residential properties. Additionally, there is a significant hit when you go to buy new vehicles because the city of Manchester also levies a sales tax. So every time you go to purchase a new vehicle, uh, you could see a significant hit from the sales tax. Additionally, the city does levy a tax upon all businesses along Manchester Road that this, that Saint Louis County doesn't. So they have a grocery receipts tax, um, where they just sort of do a lop off the top of your grocery receipts in the city of Manchester. Um, so from a, from a very high level, uh, the county feels very strongly that we provide the best-in-class services at the best prices, um, with the lowest tax rates. Um, and we are, stand by the, also the excellent service that Saint Louis County Police provide to our residents. Um, we're, we have been especially, um, proud of their, of their work, um, of their, um, of their accreditations and, um, and, and residents have expressed concerns about what that could mean for their, uh, for their, for their homes and their values, so. Excellent job. Thank you.
Pretty good.
Ja, Jacob, does the fire, I, I don't know if Manchester has a fire district or a fire department. Does, does that change anything with, with that?
Uh, city of Manchester does not provide fire service itself, so they, it is under a fire protection district. And annexations do not change the, the lines of any of the fire protection districts.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Wait a second.
Second?
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, eyes have it, and, uh, we'll see you next week.
See you next week for public hearing. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.